I hope.
Good evening. This is the Tuesday, July eleventh, two thousand twenty-three, regular meeting of the Flemington Borough Planning Board. This meeting is called pursuant to the provision of the Open Public Meetings Act, with adequate electronic notice of this meeting is provided to our publication in the Hundredy County Democrat and Prairie News newspapers on or about January eighteenth or nineteenth, two thousand twenty-three. In addition, notice of the meeting was posted on the door of Borough Flemington Municipal Building located here at the convenient Park Avenue, and any handicap accessible entrances there, too. Host on the municipal website provides to municipal clerk and distributes all persons, if any, requesting copies of the same. This meeting is being recorded with both audio and video and may be rebroadcast. This meeting is a judicial proceeding, and any questions or comments must be limited to the issues that are relevant to what the board may legally consider reaching a decision, and decorum appropriate to a judicial hearing must be maintained at all times. Let's get one of these rises you're able to.
Pledge allegiance to the United States of America, to the public, for which it has, one nation, under God, indivisible, indivisible, just as.
I mean.
Mayor Carroll. Chairwoman Ingham.
Yes.
I'm sorry. I know that chairwoman.
I knew it was gonna be.
Never.
Yeah.
I hear. Sorry. Champion.
Here.
Ashman.
I am here.
Mr. Levitt.
Here.
Mr. Cook.
Here.
Miss Giffen.
Yeah.
Ms. Weitzman is.
Just got off.
Mr. Hill. We're not seeing.
You don't see Jim.
Mr. Semino.
Here.
Mr. Apple.
Here.
Mr. Weintraub.
Here.
Mr. Show.
Here.
Ms. Kaczynski.
Yep.
Mr. Clareco.
Here.
And Mr. Klein.
Here.
Is in from Miss McManus, and Mr. Chapman is excused.
All right, thank you. Welcome to our this, our pin-shitting planner. Item one on the agenda this evening, as is with all meetings, is a period for public comment to items not currently in front of the board. If any member of the public wishes to speak, please raise your real or virtual hands.
Lois Stewart, Borough Flemington. In light of the tremendous weather problems that this part of our nation had on Sunday, I just am here, one reason I'm here, is to plead with you as you do your ordinance reviews, because I know you've been talking about that when I'm here at your meetings, and you talk about they're looking at ways to make the ordinances appropriate. I just am begging you now to make sure that the nation's concerns about the well-being of our planet are taken into your consideration so that we have adequate greenery and trees, and we have adequate water control. When I see the pictures on the television of what has happened in some communities, I think that's a forewarning of what might happen someday in Flemington, please God, no, but it could. So please, as we are doing not only new development, but whatever we're doing in Flemington, hopefully to make our community better, that those things that affect the weather and the climate and the results of poor climate incidents are taken into very serious consideration.
Thank you, Lois. Thank you. Any other members of the public? Okay, seeing on, we'll move on to item two of the agenda, mayor comments. Thank you, mayor. Council comments?
Thank you. Oh. I wanted to briefly mention the passing of Edna. Sorry. I attended her funeral over the weekend, and the mayor did. You know that Todd had sent his sympathies, and I just wanted to speak on behalf of the whole planning board to the Pepper family. For those of you that don't know Edna, she's a, she was a ninety-seven-year young, almost ninety-eight, longtime member of the planning board, and I, for one, always really appreciated her input on this floor. When she did speak, it was very deliberate, and she always had a perspective that no one else could bring to the table. And just made us think about things in different ways. So not only was she a very long-time member of the planning board for many, many years, but she also was very heavily involved in many other volunteer opportunities around town, and I just want to, I kind of say for those of you that didn't know her or are new to the planning board, volunteering can be frustrating, and you feel like sometimes you're wasting a lot of your time, and Edna volunteered for everything, and I think it was probably, you know, something little she wanted to fix, like flowers, she would just get out there and volunteer and do it, and so I just wanted to send all of our condolences to them. As council business goes, we had a subcommittee meeting on Monday, so I think we'll talk about that later. The mayor and I, and Todd, and Dennis, there he is, in the court, was in attendance. And so you'll be seeing that those come back and forth between the council and the planning board soon. And yes, there was one allocation last night, that one agenda item last night that may show up on our planning board agenda later on, and I feel I lean in on seeing where that will fit into our agenda. But when, if, when that comes, and yes, the applicant comes in, we just have to make sure that Bob would have enough time to review.
To review videos.
Yes, I will, you know, she can play it later, but this is, there's one, I'll just send that one down later, and that's about it.
Thanks. Make sure you can see comments, Dennis. Here's for me to do this.
I left this subject for Dennis purposely, so.
Hey, sorry, I just want to mention that Richard Giffen and John Hatch, so Richard's the chairperson of the HPC, they went over with the Borough Council last night what the HPC had proposed to expand the historic district boundary back in two thousand nineteen, it was never implemented. It sounded like the council supported, so the HPC will go through the normal regular process to propose that and hopefully get that implemented. So more to follow on that.
Thanks, Dennis. Item five on the agenda this evening is approval of minutes from the June twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-three regular meeting, was circulated by email.
Yes, I have one comment from Mr. Show that under the HPC comments I had meetings last night, and it was last week, so that has been corrected.
I get a motion and second on the minutes.
So move cook.
Second, Champion.
Thanks. Any other corrections or clarification of the minutes?
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Champion?
Yes.
Ashton?
Yes.
Mayor Carroll?
Yes.
Councilwoman Ingham?
Yes.
Mr. Levitt?
Yeah.
Miss Giffen? Ms. Weitzman?
Yes.
Mr. Semino?
Yes.
Thank you. All right, item six on the agenda this evening is carried over from last meeting about an escrow return for premier after media LLC block forty-nine lot two. We did reach out to them, there were some concerns about landscaping. We did hear back from them.
Yes, they said that they could not plant those, which is in the heat at this point of the season, so it's up to the board whether they would like to support that.
I actually spoke with council.
Yeah.
And we were going to discuss whether or not they want to leave somebody in Esbro, whether there was some alternative, whether the board would consider waiting until it would be more appropriate. I'm saying mine, October, September, or something like those kinds. But what I asked council to go back give me a proposal for what it is that they're looking for.
Okay, so if there isn't any objection, let's table this matter until we hear back from them. You want to make sure that.
Correct, and they are clear to exactly what we're talking about, about landscaping, okay, just want to make sure.
I'm now. Now, the, I left it very vague, I, you know, the board had discussed that, you know, there were some landscaping that had been planted and is no longer viable, so I'm sure it's probably pretty clear what it is in view of.
Right, and there should be.
The dead, the dead stuff.
I didn't know these specifics.
I saw two dead trees, there were two of them were brown and the others were green, so I think there's at least two, okay, so I know.
So replace whatever's around.
Okay.
Right.
But yes, they're gonna, they're gonna look for an alternative, because it really doesn't make much sense to do anything if it's not appropriate.
Now, so, so let's, let's hold this off until we hear back from them, but
Right.
I, I would feel better if we waited until the work was done in September, October.
Yeah, I just wanted to leave it on the agenda so that we could, you know, have that discussion.
Okay.
And I'll keep checking, I'll just.
The viable new trees have to be ordered, like every couple days, for the, for the year, at least.
Yeah.
So if they're gonna just keep doing the same thing over and over.
Well, they're gonna use, they're gonna use their escrow.
Well, exactly, I think that that's something that we should consider when we talk about it at that point, because, you know, we don't want to release the escrow owner and then have to go back to the place the same trees, which should at least be to a point where the trees become viable, or we think that they're viable, and then we want to keep a portion of that.
There is a landscaping bond, but I don't know if they want to, which is four thousand dollars, but I don't know, it would have to be a discussion with council if they want us to, if, that's in mind, in case the borough wants to install those, that landscape, I believe, and then, but you know, the landscaper might have a care keeper two years that he has to replace us.
Right, so let's, yeah, let's just wait and see, but yeah, I agree, we want to make sure this, okay, sounds good. All right, item seven on the agenda this evening is a completeness determination for Worksville Road Properties LLC application two thousand twenty-two dash oh five blocks forty-five, block forty-five, excuse me, lots eleven, twelve, and fifteen, now this is a site plan subdivision application. So if you put on that laptop, you know, click. Just need you to click that you're accepting that you're gonna rejoin us at council. And turn the camera on, but don't worry about the audio, the mic. Donna, you don't have to unmute yourself this time, because I just need the camera. I think cameras. Yeah, maybe you want to tilt it. A little more. Thank you.
My name is Robyn Ryan. I'm an attorney with the law firm of lands and landscaping in Flemington. I represent Worksville Road Properties LLC, the owners of twenty-eight Parker Ave, twenty-eight eight Parker Ave, and Parker Ave, we are, these are three adjoining lots. My client is seeking to build ten townhouses, eighteen townhomes on three lots. We applied for preliminary site plan subdivision approval. There was a completeness review on June twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-two. We were deemed incomplete, waivers were granted for certain items. Thereafter, we, there's a small part of the property that extends into Raridan. We met with the Raridan Township engineer and planner. We pursued a municipal boundary line adjustment to deal with that small parcel. Early this year, we determined that that was not going to take place, and so we've submitted additional documentation, we revised the plans, and we have Eric Frupneray, our engineer, who is here to address Mr. Clareco's concerns in this letter.
Okay, so we're gonna. Yes, Hillary, you want to be sure.
I have a situation, this before the board, a year ago essentially. You granted the waivers, or a number of items, and they left it complete, I did, they did a resubmission, I did an updated report outlining the additional documentation that's come in, so it's listing all the, all the documentation previously filed, plus the amended estimation. I indicated in the letter of June twenty-sixth of this year which items have been addressed by the resubmission, which items were previously waived, and outlined, I highlighted actually items that were partially addressed, or one item I left for interpretation. Guidance from Tara on. And summarize at the end, where it was an agreement. There's certain waivers you'd still need to grant, essentially related to state permits, our checklist requires the issuance of those documents, the essentially the letter of interpretation, they made an application for it, but they don't have the back state yet. So again, it's a partial item, they've made, they've made, they made a submission, but they don't have. Similar would be the application for what has a determination, to identify what those items are. There was one item, additional documentation, surveyor on. Essentially, as I indicated, this municipal line runs through this property. They are essentially, previously had defined geometry of that line, the geometry of that line, the property, they've done that. I was just asking, essentially because they're putting the building six feet away from the line. I was just looking for whatever supporting information they utilized to make that, you know, where that line is located, since it is so close to the buildings. And there was a zoning question related to the fact that we have a minimum lot area, and the rear portion of these lots, if they're using the unique minimum area, it's actually land that's not in the boroughs, and so it would be more of a legal question whether they can count that land as part of the minimum, meeting the minimum standards, whether they need to seek variance from that property. So essentially, it boils down to the last paragraph of the letter. You own the grant with waivers, identify the items that would be waived, and the procedural question, I left the carries to whether she believes that the application should be seeking variance for that particular element. There was another element relating to setback. I understand that's from property line, and the property one is not in the.
Walk us through what all this means.
Yeah, so Robyn and I were talking previously, and setbacks aren't going to be measured from the boundary line. I want to take a little closer look at the issue of lot area, because there's a little question that specifically suggests that case law provides subdivisions and utilizing the just the land within municipality itself, and those requirements would regard to lot area. But at the end of the day, that does become a legal issue that we'll have to properly address and notice, it's not really a completeness issue. So they satisfied these from appearing, but it's concerned with where that relying area is actually located. Robyn and I will confirm and make sure that we'll clear on exactly what the legal determination of where the calculation should be made from, and then if they go through what variance should be necessary as a result. It is determined that it is variance, the application should be admitted, and there's probably fees or something to be addressed as well.
But that doesn't necessarily impact completeness.
Right.
Does anybody have any other questions for Bob or for Carol? So I need a motion.
Maybe we just want to identify, Bob, what are the additional waivers and partial papers that want to be.
Ah, there are your last paragraph, items nineteen, twenty-one, thirty-seven, forty, and forty-one.
This would be the addition. Weaving this evening.
These are false, temporary.
Temporary waivers.
Can you read those numbers again, nineteen, twenty-one, thirty-seven, forty, and forty?
Need a motion, temporarily, wait for additional items and be moved up to.
I guess. Serena, there we go.
Mr. Semino?
Is, is there any, any other discussion? Thank you.
Mr. Semino?
Yes.
Miss Giffen?
Yeah.
Mayor Carroll?
Yeah.
Councilwoman Ingham?
It's not a discussion.
Anymore?
It's not, we don't, it's, it should not be a use variance, and it is, yeah, it's.
The variance was over, but wasn't there a variance on this? You make sense.
Yes. Mr. Champion?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Levitt?
Yeah.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Ms. Weitzman?
Yes. Yes.
Yeah, we got you, you got you. All right, so before we, initially, we tried to think about scheduling, and we, it sounds like there's some legal question needs resolved, and then.
I can do that, but I just want to confirm one thing, that I see a little disconnect with this one.
Okay, and then notice and all the rest of it might be impacted by that, right, so that's why I want to.
Correct, the later we did, probably, I hope, pretty good.
Do we want to try to look at the calendar, or, or do you want to get back with slightly after?
Or new plans seem to be submitted, or?
Now, there's a fair amount of information for you, we have already.
Is this, that would be simultaneously reviewed in America?
They either have to get a review, or they have to get a letter of no interest, or whatever, depending on how they proceed.
We would have really, considering Raridan, we have side agency, and then we have to, to provide a subdivision, or whatever types of approvals they need, I think you have that mentioned here. And you can do that as division of approval.
Right, the majority of the projects are, so some, they may, I don't, I don't, I'm not speaking for another jurisdiction, but sometimes they may some, some, some places might issue a letter of no interest to say that they'll follow what we do, but I don't think we're gonna get that.
Yeah, we will make it, everybody's.
Yeah.
There are laws, there is some improvements that are some.
Correct, there's retaining law. All right, then you're gonna have to.
I mean, ninety-five percent of the project is in the borough, and that's what's described in the last year. But some, any action you might take.
It's gonna have to be contingent on. We've, we've dealt with these, you know, as they come up.
Sometimes we've done joint meetings, and, you know, very randomly, but I used to know that.
So.
Tentatively, I mean, it would depend on what we would have noticed.
We can, we don't have to set a date right now, I just figured I could ask, and if the answer's no, then it's okay, we can come back to that, it just that, I know that we've got.
Yeah, what do we have?
That's why, yeah.
Well, we have the two public hearings tonight, I don't know.
They're both not happening, but that's okay, one of them's gonna have to, there's a thing, so. And then there is also, we also carry Spice Factory to August twenty-fifth. So it's whatever the second meeting is, and that, that'll be a full meeting. So we could look at the first meeting in September, or we could look, unless you want to try to go quick, but.
Now, the August eighth?
No, not August, September, I thought.
Oh, September.
Because much, much you wanted to go on it to. August eighth is possible, I don't know if there's anything else on there, but that's, since we have everything, that's a month out, and that could be, and we could also.
It'd be September twelfth.
September twelfth, yeah.
September twelfth.
Or August eighth, but.
Just want to say for the record, I'll, and I'm sure Beth will accommodate whatever you decide, there's a lot to review, so.
Yeah.
Okay, what's, September, we're probably, are you available?
Yeah.
September. Yeah, we had to move that because of the Labor Day.
Labor Day, yes. All right, so let's, let's, let's tentatively pencil it in, and if, and if needs to change based on professionals, we can always, now, but that's, that's. Yeah, okay, great, thank you. All right, item, before we move to items eight and nine, which are both use variances. Mayor and council member are gonna have to choose at that point. I just wanted to mention for everyone, before they leave, that I did get a note from Beth that the subcommittee met, and that there's going to be circulated before our next meeting revisions based, based on what we talked about last meeting, and they went back and did some work, and so we were gonna have time on next meeting's agenda to talk through that, those proposed changes there. And she didn't have anything else. That's something that, that was just where it was at. And just wanted to do that before they had to step down. Okay, all right, so then we'll move on to item eight on the agenda. You think you're done? Item eight on the agenda is a public hearing, Douglas Stryker, application two thousand twenty-three dash oh two block thirty-five, lot sixty, thirteen, Brown Street, which is a use variance application.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Stephen Gruenberg, attorney in Flemington, on behalf of Douglas Stryker, who is the applicant. We had provided appropriate proof of service and publication of the notice of hearing on this matter, and we followed the letter to the law of what the tax assessor provided to us in terms of the two-hundred-foot list. Honestly, we're entitled to rely upon that, but I had some conversations with Ms. Kaczynski today, and it turns out that the tax assessor forgot the other tax sheet on the list, so a number of properties weren't provided to us to serve. Although under municipal land use law, applicants are allowed to rely upon the list, we don't think it's fair to the board or to the public to proceed forward on the public hearing when even the next-door neighbors weren't served on this property. So what we're going to ask, if it's okay with the board, is to continue this hearing. Hopefully, I can't get notice in for the second meeting in July, but the first meeting in August, and make an announcement this evening that the matter is continued to that date, and only require us to notice, hopefully we get the other half of the list, and then we can notice those people. But that way, we don't have to do the whole notice and the publication again.
Karen's, that works?
That would be fine, and that would be the first meeting of August one, the first eight.
Are you available? I'm gonna make sure that I already see Bob. Yeah, second, the second Tuesday, it is August. I am available. Good, all right, so since we need to make sure, that's, that's kind of.
There will be some.
All right. So I want to make sure, this, it's, it's vacations, so I want to make sure that we have a full complement. Is anyone who's left on the board here will not be here on August? Oh, we're good, that's rare.
In August.
In August, that is, all right, so then what we're going to do is the public hearing for application two thousand twenty-three oh two, block thirty-five, lot sixty, thirteen, Brown Street is carried to August eighth, seven PM in this room, no further notice will be needed, the applicant will, on receipt, make sure that those who have not yet been noticed will be noticed for that day and time.
Thank you very much, I got worked out for the public's benefit.
All right, moving on, we are at item nine on the agenda. This evening is the public hearing for Douglas Stryker application twenty twenty-three oh-three, block seven, lot five, which is fifty-three East Main Street, uh, another use variance application. James, if you want to come up here, you can, there's room if you'd like.
Sure.
Yeah. We got room. Um, so.
Stephen Gruenberg, on behalf of the applicant, Douglas Stryker, uh, this is our application for fifty-three East Main Street and I provided proof of service and publication of the notice of hearing and I ask that we confirm that jurisdiction, uh, is with the board.
Yes, it is.
Thank you, um, so this is Harold Bush's home office and the way this had worked previously was that Mr. Bush received approval in nineteen eighty-eight to allow a residence on the second floor and his professional office on the first floor for himself and up to two employees. There's ten parking spaces in the back. Mr. Stryker has purchased that, um, home and office building. Um, the, the problem is that the prior resolution sets is only approved for a lawyer and two employees. So unless you can find a lawyer and two employees operating in that building, no one else is going to want to buy it. And that's the way it's set up right now, Mr. Stryker has done a lot of improvements to the inside of the building and made it look really nice, which we'll show you, um, but he's having a difficult time marketing it, selling it, because it would only be limited to a lawyer and two employees. We're asking for a use variance approval to essentially continue that same type of use but allow it to be for professional office with the residents on the second floor, so it could be open to an accountant or, uh, an architect or some other with two employees, um, or a barber shop with, um, a owner occupied person with up to two employees or a hairdresser with themselves and two employees or a bookstore for themselves with two employees, actually had somebody who was interested in the bookstores, so I added that into the list. Um, it's essentially the same type of use, but just opening it up to a different category and removing that condition of it being limited to a lawyer's office. Um, with that, I have three witnesses this evening, I have Mr. Stryker, um, I have Dave Newton to talk about the Asbeld survey that we provided to you, and then I have John Mann, who provided the planning process. So if you would like, we can either swear the man all at once or one at a time.
We can, we can do it all together, it's time, so if, uh, if, if, if you could come towards, uh, the table just so that we're not supposed to do on the laptop camera or standing, that's good, you're good there, so.
I'll swear our witnesses as well. Uh, just for the testimony, you're about to give this board the truth of all truth and nothing more.
Yeah, I do. All right, thank you.
All right, and just before we start, one more is A one, the application and supporting documentation that happens to be today and A two, you know. And you know, since we're here, let's mark as P V one, uh, the board engineer's letter dated June eighth, twenty twenty-three and we'll mark it as P V two, um, the letter dated July seventh, twenty twenty-three, remember.
Let me sit right here. Put that microphone right there. Mr. Stryker, what was your career?
I was a police officer, uh, chief of police in Clinton County, Hunter County, and are you retired?
Twenty-three years, and, um, did you purchase this property at fifty-three East Main Street?
Yes.
And why did you purchase it?
Well, since I'm there, law enforcement, I'm always put by residential homes and this kind of intrigued me. A residential home with a commercial, doesn't sound standard.
When you purchased it, you knew that there had been residential on the first floor and, and like an office use on the second floor by Mr. Bush, correct?
Yes, because when I renovated the, the house, I burned it, painted it, sand floors down, you see holes in the floor where the kitchen was downstairs and now it's upstairs, okay?
So you actually relocated the kitchen, now it was upstairs, when I bought the kitchen was upstairs, okay? And what did you do?
Took your old cabinets out, they were not too good, okay, and I put new ones.
So I'm going to hopefully put the zip drive in the U S D. board. Have you had, are you allowed to share or no?
I'm just trying to get the phone that up at first.
What is on? That was, it's photo one on the drive, but you can make that considered a three. I was gonna say, was this part of the initial submission or is this?
This is in addition.
And so this is a.
A new exhibit, okay.
And let me show you what we marked as exhibit A three, can you describe that photo first?
Me?
Yep.
That's upstairs, there was an old kitchen exactly where you see this, but the doors were, it was a mess. So I had my guys rip it out, I got a permit from the town and they said almost I put everything back exactly where it was, the plumbing and stuff, I didn't, I wasn't changing it.
So this is the new kitchen on the, on the, uh, second floor.
Yes.
For the resident.
Yes.
Let me show you what we'll mark exhibit A four. And if you could describe that photo for us.
Left downstairs, that was part of his law office, that's where he has more, it was an office.
Okay, and you redid the floors?
I sanded the floors and restained them, painted them. The trick, the walls and the trim.
Will you, we'll, we'll mark this exhibit. Eighteen six?
Five.
Five? Thanks. This is the downstairs hallway that goes up to the first floor.
Yeah.
The entrance, the, the hallway downstairs.
Yeah.
That way, so. This is the other office area downstairs.
That's an office and I thought that was like the main part of his office because of the fireplace and it has a side door, it went out to the porch over here on the right side, that the door goes out to the side porch and right here on the left side is a half bathroom that he used. Again, painted, redid the trim, and, and redid the floors.
So essentially the, the downstairs has the ability to have two work areas.
There's, there's a third room over here on the left side next to that where bookcases were, that, there's not a picture here. But there's a small office there, that was where the old kitchen, I guess originally years ago.
That was, that's more of a break room type area?
Yes.
So you, you have the two office areas that could be used, one for like an office space and, and another either for a waiting area for two people in the staff, correct?
Yeah, I kind of took it that this way, it would be where our business was, that's where people would go. The office where the bookshelves were, that would be his private office.
Right.
And then the other office that you can't see, I thought that would be, like you said, like a conference room or a, and someone to go and sit down and have a cup of coffee, they could go in there.
So there's plenty of room for one, uh, owner occupier, kind of the boss, and two employees, correct?
Oh, absolutely, you couldn't have more than that, no, because just the layout of the staircase and goes upstairs. Not gonna have, it's only one, one bedroom upstairs.
And, and if there was a barber shop there, the intention would be to limit it to three chairs, correct? One for the boss and two for, uh, employees.
Yeah, I'm, I'm obviously on my board, but I can't see a crowd, you know, four, five chairs.
So we would want, we would agree to a limitation of one boss and two employees, correct?
Yep.
And same thing if it was a hairdresser, it'd be one boss plus two employees, correct? And so it'd be up to three chairs. Three chairs.
Yes.
Working chairs, and if it was a bookstore type thing, it would be limited to the areas that we just talked about for just like.
Yes, but on the bookstore part, I didn't look at it like you walk in, looking to show up and say, I want to buy that book, I was looking at for more of a reference bookstore where people came in and they had a, a librarian, so to speak, that could research and dig into like histories of stuff. Not like a bookstore that you'd normally think of.
It's more of a professional office type thing?
Yes. Where people do research. Yeah, but that, I had a person that wanted their bookstore there, or, or I had to go for a variance and I didn't know if I was gonna get, they took off. They didn't want to wait and they didn't want to come in and testify.
What's the problem that you've had in marketing this property when it's limited to, that is, uh, residents on the second floor and lawyer and two, uh, employees on the first floor?
When I first looked at it, in a real estate approach, being buyer, I didn't, I haven't dealt in this situation before, but I thought it was kind of unique to have a, a lawyer upstairs and his office downstairs, I know in, in Somerville where the some, where courthouse is, you drive around the streets, I thought you see the lawyers where they've got their offices there and we're only a few blocks away from the county seat, so I thought it might be a good investment, something I'd want to try. I didn't know it was going to be that restricted, not hard, that hard to find an attorney that wanted office there and his practice downstairs.
So if you wanted to have an accountant in there, they couldn't do it under prior approval, correct?
No, I talked to Jeff Lot Klein about it, who was a building inspector, and, uh, he said, no, what's, what's written there on that variance years ago, that's what it's got to be.
So we're asking the board for the ability to have a professional office with, um, a owner occupier and two employees or a hairdresser with an occupier and two employees, barber shop occupier and two employees or a bookstore type thing with an occupier and, uh, two employees, correct?
Yes, but it's kind of like a, a bad situat, I don't know who wants to buy it.
But that's what we're asking.
We're asking, you know.
To get that or?
Morris might even say, I want some, something else in there. My concern is that if they're a professional and it's not like a cash store, you know, or a quick check or something like that, if it's a professional that wants to go in there, that's the use I'm looking.
That's what we just, and that's why we're asking for a professional use.
Officer with two, uh, yeah, like, like a council board, so like somebody that needs to just like a young person that's just starting out in business and stuff, or a married couple, this way they don't have to have too expensive, they don't have to rent an office to have their practice and then have a lawyer's paying on a house. This thing is like kill two birds with one stone.
That's essentially what's been done since nineteen eighty-eight.
Yes.
And the site has ten parking spaces right now?
Nine parking, one hand down, ten.
Okay.
And there's a ship that's partially located on one of those spaces that is movable and you can, the floor about to be, and that, I own or certainly, or can, you see, or even, I, I got land behind it, the payments that I can put the shit on, and it's still being written.
We're not proposing any site changes at all, correct?
Nope, the site function as, as this, that would use since nineteen eighty-eight, we can use the function that way today, correct?
Yes. I have no other questions, Mr. Stryker. Okay, uh, any questions from our boards professionals, uh? Testimony given by Mr. Stryker about humans?
No, just definitely one. Obviously, um, this is owner occupied, because there's really no way for that upper apartment to be separated from the, the access to that apartment upstairs is through the stairwell as part of the downstairs office. Yes, yeah, it would take, it's considerable renovation.
You're not, you're not proposing?
No, no.
Questions?
To this. Ms. Kuzinski, um, there's all of the discussions have been about, about professional offices and parking exam of the professional office. Medical offices are, not professional medical offices are allowed in zone. So I would assume that you'd be pushing it to be used, but I believe that's kind of true that if the parking isn't if you're looking for professional office as that umbrella that includes professional medical. Everything. It was centered in the parking. You know, yes, my opinion or is?
You can go to that there, it's.
I, it, it's more a matter, it's, it's, it's pressing concern. The description is it's a mixed use, professional residence.
Maybe I can answer it.
Okay, if it had six rooms downstairs, I would say medical could be an issue. But you don't have room for, I don't know what a doctor would do with one room. You know, he's not gonna put ten people in one room. Well, even then, I don't, I don't, it's small, that down, it's maybe like seven, eight hundred square feet, it's not. It may, it may be appropriate for, for you to actually voluntarily take that off the table because you're looking at, uh, lawyers, accounts, engineers, planners, something that can fit in this small space. Well, if the doctor, let's say a doctor's, I don't know, an eye doctor. I don't, I don't know. When I go to doctors, you, there's usually two or three waiting, you know, uh, but they got, they got like twenty rooms.
They got a, they got a lot of space that.
I can see it, if the, if the doctor was gonna do it. I can't see a doctor like um, making reservations, so to speak, appointments for eight or ten people and have them sit there, because it's only, it's only gonna be him.
Right.
So I don't, I just don't, I think with the, with the amount of space that we have there, I think of any profession like that, I don't think there's an issue with overcrowding this, but I can't see a professional putting twenty people in that room, correct?
What was asked to allow, to allow professional offices would allow that without at least it was kind of, it's kind of opening it up. Or if you're over. I'll shut up. I'll shut up, yeah.
You want me?
Yeah, they just talked to you. I just have two minutes. Sure.
We went from incredibly narrow to completely broad.
Well, I do know, you know.
So this is gonna be more than just a size. Ours.
Any question?
You?
Parking, yes.
From here. There is obviously. Yeah. I'm clarifying.
Why did I say it long with your style?
It's like, oh, I don't understand.
I'm not good at things.
I'm still on the road, boy.
Absolutely, you're still listening. Okay, so um, so there is a question about. That our planner asked about uh. How broad an hour we're talking about. Medical. All the uses, and so what's the, what's the answers?
Answers, we'd like to be able to do medical professional uses that are, that would be um. Limited to the ten parking spaces that are on site. So that we, we think that based upon the um, the limited space that's available on the first floor. That the ten parking spaces can accommodate any um, limited medical professional office such as like a psychiatrist. Psychiatrist or a psychologist might want to work on the second floor or live on the separate floor. And have an office downstairs, technically that's a medical professional office. But it's more of a counselor. And clearly ten parking spaces is, is adequate for that. Um, any type of medical professional in that type of circumstance, the site can accommodate it because of the limited nature of the, the first floor.
So I want to make sure I've got this clearly for the record, testimony is that. Uh, any medical related use that would fall on our existing ordinance that would trigger a different parking application. Um, it's in our ordinance ready, would be limited to the ten sites that were on. Yeah, it would only have, would only permit tenancy of, or as well as proposing tenancy by someone who could use just the ten that's on there. And the absence of that, it would require parking variance and you'd have to come forward the board.
Correct.
Does that answer the question?
I will start thinking about how to.
Ten put that into a. So, okay.
Sorry, I will have to think about how to put a condition to that effect together if the board decides to grant this and how's our work?
Okay, I just want to make sure I captured correctly.
That's correct.
Okay.
But it, because essentially we are limiting our use to ten parking spaces. And by function, the size of this building works well with the ten parking spaces that are, are available for any type of professional office. We're not proposing a gas. By any of those other permitted uses in the zone that wouldn't work with it. It seems that the, the, the two overriding conditions is our. Free staff employees, whether it's a chiropractor. It's the employees. Correct. We're, we're meaning to limit that person plus two. It's limiting that number of people who could work on, onsite.
Are, are we going to hear some testimony how many square feet are on the lower floor of this?
Yes.
Okay. It was probably not the exact.
Any other questions? Okay. It's terrible this year.
Um, this may be something that the planner would want to take a look at and connect with this testimony. Um, adding the bookstore, I just want to make sure we fit it into one of the principal uses. Since we deal with the uh, S I C codes. Um, I see secondhand shops, um, so I use bookstore could fall within that. Um, and I see a couple others in here, I just want to make sure that we're going to identify which one it fits within. Um, for the board could, you know, of course grant an additional use variance for that, but I think it's probably easier to fit it into one of the permitted uses that are there. Unless I'm missing it, it called out, I've looked at it a couple times. Might be missing it, but maybe uh, even if it does not. Okay.
Any questions from members of the board uh, to Mr. Striker? Anyone online, I click on raise hands so I can see. Uh, questions from members of the public?
That was Stuart Huntington. I believe, did you testify that there would only be three chairs if it was some sort of service occupancy?
You. Yeah, yeah, three people, three chairs, I mean, there might be other, like, a desk with a chair behind it, but are we talking about barbershop chairs? For a few chairs for the business, for the service use, for like a barber shop or?
Three chairs, right.
Would there be other employees, you believe there would be other employees between the. Besides the people that are providing the service to the clients in those three chairs?
No, I don't know who they would be.
So the maximum people that you would have there at any one time, would you suggest that it might be no more than nine? Because there would be three of the chairs, three workers, and maybe three people waiting to take the place?
Maybe maximum that, I don't. Uh, I, I, I go to my stuff and I only see one or two cars there. I don't know where they get all the cars, but, but even under a worst case scenario, if we have ten parking spaces, that would accommodate that. Right?
Yeah, because one of the people, you testified, did you not? That one of the people that's going to be working one of those chairs is going to live upstairs. So his, that car would just count for one either upstairs or downstairs.
His, his or whoever owns it. I think it could be male, I don't know.
Do you envision that somebody might live upstairs that ran the shop but did not?
No, I know, I know your question, it's owner occup.
Yes, but can the. But can the owner. Employ three people to opt to provide service to those three chairs?
No, no.
So he's gonna, the person's gonna have two employees downstairs. So two and one owner is three and three customers is six and a couple waiting. And so how many, how many parking spaces do you have to have for the living space upstairs?
One or two.
What just the ordinance require?
Hey, the question may be better for the planner to answer. Okay, thank you. I'm done, uh, turn it out, sure. I'm sure there's another question, I apologize.
I'm just going to, Calcan, I'm on, uh, Hamilton, I'm sorry, what was that again? Dorothy Calken.
Great, thank you.
I'm on Brown. D A L K I N, I'm on Brown, I'm on Brown Street. Um, I was just curious, how could you have. Sinks and water supply to these areas to this room? They, would it be appropriate to put in pipes and things that they need to. Giving out the water and the washer and.
We think on Brown Street? It doesn't matter, well, that's, no, do you have a slab, you know, how's one slab, we have a basement?
Our basement.
There's a basement there, so to bring a pipe or a drain up to the floor to accommodate a sink or some.
Well, there's going to be, if there's two people or three people in the place working, there's probably three stations.
Yeah, well, they can bring the plumbing up through the floor because it's got a full basement.
Is it?
And they obviously, if that was to occur, and which it will, if, if, if in fact a beautician or barber wants to play there. He'd have to get permits from the building department to do that.
Sorry, I guess.
But if, if, if an accountant, he ain't going to want.
No.
He ain't going to sink in there, so that's his.
Right.
So it depends on the occupation. But there is an access, it's got a full basement.
The element of this patient is they are asking favor. I think they need to hear the testimony relating to. What I thought initially was just a barber, a beauty shop, and now it's open to some other uses. You're going to have to hear all that, and at the end of that discussion, the board is willing to grant that kind of relief. Then we're going to have to think about implications to site plan, if there are elements of the site plan that they need to provide us with, or if there's other. Example, water and sewer issues on changing use, go through the, you know, sort of water and sort of problems. If we need to define what this application is on the use issue first, and then. After that, consider what aspects of site plans may or may not be.
Yeah, just to clarify, we're, we're asked, we made the argument that we're exempt from site plan approval. Based upon a reading of the ordinance, I provided correspondence to the board indicating that because we're not proposing any uh. Changes to the site, um, and because of the limited nature of this application, that we're actually exempt from site plan approval.
You can.
Uh, we've. We've um. Provided the board with an as-built survey. Which is a detailed plan of what's existing on the site right now with the ingress, megress. And what, what's there now that hasn't been changed and isn't going to be changed. Um, and it's been there since nineteen eighty eight, so um. We're, we're, we've argued that we're exempt from site plan approval, and just because there might be a change in the type of. Professional officer use that's going in there doesn't change the fact that it's a residence on the second floor. With a, a business type use on the first floor. But, but we can, we can argue about that later, but right now we're talking about the use.
Certain changes, the uses might warrant, you know, building code, certain notifications to infrastructure that's currently serving this structure. It may, may reset. That's, that's awesome.
You're absolutely right to raise it, I think we can get to that.
I just want to do spike fashion of that. Sure.
I was just saying, I think one thing that, you know, might be helpful in making, before making that determination. Is the, the section of site plan uh, on waiver or exemption. Um, does discuss that the, that can happen in certain instances, one of which will be that the number of required issued parking or loading spaces is not increased. So if we go through and find out exactly what we're talking about, I'm making some notes here as we go. Um, that might come to light and, and the board may more easily be able to, to grant that, that waiver. Um, or ask for additional information with a zero wage.
Other questions from members of the public?
That was Stuart, based on the comments now, do our, do, do the board, does the board professionals agree that the?
That, I was just questions for this.
I can't have you ask them a question, you have to ask. And if there's a point that you want to raise, save it for when we get to public comment, uh, and then you can say whatever you want.
I realize that, I, I know how this works, I'm sure you know this. But I, did you just say? Uh, Mr. Grover, that by law. This application is relieved from any site plan.
Questions, uh, I'm sorry, Lois, just procedurally questions of the witness, Mr. Striker has testified.
But he's, he's the one that said it.
He is making a comment to the board, he is not testifying, he's answering the question of the board, the questions right now are just for Mr. Striker. You know, you'll have your time to say whatever you want.
I know, but then you don't get the answers, so. Mr. Striker, I have to talk to you, I hope you don't mind. But it is, it is your understanding that you do not have to present a site plan to this board. Showing the landscaping and the lighting and that sort of thing, which is part of. Your business that would be on that site.
So I'm going to say that that's a question, that he's not qualified to answer that question as a business owner and operator, of course. On the testimony given, but I absolutely will make sure that their planner answers that question. We'll make sure that that's what's the plan, because then they're, then, then the planner have the expertise to be able to answer that question. I, I understand why you're asking a question.
Now, it says right here on page four.
All right, uh, any other questions? All right, thank you. Mr. New. I did, no, I'm, I'm, there's no other people online, actually. Sorry, there's no other.
Thank you for your qualifications and license for that. Oh, William's David Newton, licensed, uh, glance surveyor, I've been in the survey profession for close to forty years, in business for myself for twenty-three years. Live locally, survey locally for a long time, and um.
Mr. Newton is an expert, uh, landscape advisor.
Any objections, questions, Mr. New appears before this board?
Thank you. Uh, can you just give the board the benefit of your survey and the uh, size of the building and uh, the parking area?
Okay, um, I'm not sorry, man. You brought, you brought the, the, right now, we have a, um, and, and Mr. Farah called and asked a question about the square footage and the footprint of the building. On the survey is a thousand and one square foot footprint. On the first floor. I performed the survey and now for Mr. Striker and May of this year, um. All improvements are shown as well as surrounding improvements, so you can afford to make an informed decision, um. All improvements including contours, parking spaces, there are ten parking spaces, as Mr. Striker has said, one of them is handicap. There's access to the north side of the property, the parking in the rear. Um, all curving is shown, um. And on the survey, we have the zoning information. What variances would be required?
The uh, there's a shed located uh. Or to the, we're looking for an arrow to the east, uh, yes. Southeast or east of the property line, um, that's presently located on one of the parking spaces, but is there enough land there that can be relocated into the grass area?
Yes, there's.
And that's, that's a bootable shed, that's not.
It's totally temporary, okay.
And that's all I have, actually, Mr. New.
Questions from our.
Um, just, just, um, how many bedrooms in the apartment upstairs?
We understand, Mr. Striker said one.
One bedroom?
Correct. That's what I heard in his testimony earlier. I didn't do an interior inspection of the house, it's boring, my second life.
And the um, Mr. Madden. Um, the driveway that serves this property, does it have any common rights? If, if, did you do any title work on, on the property, see if there's any, or are you adjoining property?
I did preliminary title work and there are no common easements across the driveway for accessibility to the property to the north or to us or properties in the south, no.
And basically, you're out, does the driveway's function as a two-way driveway where you're using the neighbor's element, or does the neighbor use this driveway?
Everyone is two-way on its own.
Sorry?
Each driveway is two-way on its own.
So if this owner or the adjoining owner want to put a fence down the middle?
Yes, they could.
They could. And that's your understanding of how this was approved originally? Do you have access to the original site plan?
I surveyed this for Harold Bush when I was at Board of Board Engineering back in the eighties, yes, for Harold Bush's son. Let's actually not there.
And the, the original site plan is more of a question. Um, are there any, is there any kind of a stormwater management facility in the grass area that's active at the property?
There's an E inlet to the northeast corner of the property. And there's also an inlet to the southeast corner with probably an underdrift, but it's off of us behind us.
Does the original site plan for this property show that there's a strong water basin in the grass area?
I would have perfect to the original site.
Um, Mr. Grober, is somebody going to justify as to what the original site plan showed?
Oh, here it is. I'm looking at it now, from morning to morning. Nineteen. I need to imagine why it's. Very small. But it doesn't show any drainage easements across the rear of us, there's only drainage coming from the north Lincoln Circle to an E inlet, northeast of our course.
Again, my question is, the site plan showed that there's any kind of an underb- My question is, the site plan showed that there's any kind of an underground or surface strong water feature in it. Whether ever, was there ever one, was there one approved as part of the original site?
None that shows on this. On board boards, but I'm just the first I looked through this.
So you're saying the born born site plan does not show a strong water facility at the back of this property?
No. Well, nothing to drainage on the board and board application, no drainage, I have it online, but only at the surface, no subsurface piping.
That really cool question.
No, there's no, there's not a show on the board.
Just just for the record, I'm not sure, I'm looking at what was submitted as part of this application, the site development plan for Harold Bush. Was she wanted, it was, it was, I believe it came from the applicant. Somehow I ended up with a copy, so I'm not sure how I got it, but I'm assuming, believe it came as part of the application.
And what's the uh?
Matter of fact, I think I referenced it in my, uh, in a second. We had a site development plan for Harold Bush, sheet one of three dated December nineteen, this is hard to read, eighty-eight.
Okay.
And it has no revision dates on it.
Oh, okay, sheet two, I didn't want to sheet two.
I'm looking at sheet one. But I'm looking at a plan that says the back area of this property where the grass is, uh, says uh. Detention drainage here, and then says see some other sheet for detail.
Was this in this form of the application?
It was.
Okay.
We can't get a recharge of yours, see sheet two, I have sheet two right here. And sheet two does show a subsurface pipe, east of the pipe, north of the north.
We're going into the site, actually, but I don't know, the reason I raised it, we're talking about. Not modifying anything to site, we're talking about moving a shed onto the grass area, but I'm thinking that that grass area is not necessarily just a grass area, it's serving some other function. Or at least it was back in nineteen eighty-eight, um, I don't know, I've been on the site, I just see grass, I'm not really sure. Exactly what's going on, that that's all.
Wish it could be removed. Both, yeah, not.
We take away this.
Take away the show?
Take away the show.
Okay. Other questions, uh, Mr. Newton, from Bob, you have any questions? Number four, questions for Mr. Newton? Uh, Tom, please.
Uh, what's the approximate lot size?
Oh, the lot size is eleven thousand one hundred and forty-three square feet.
Thank you. And and one more question, because I'm I'm pulling up my zoning map right now, it is on the um. Is it just north of Commerce, um, is is that the the property where where it's located? Is is it the the? I'm I'm having a hard time finding it on 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 a map.
It is just north of the Edwards property.
Yes, okay, that's what I thought, that's what I thought.
Yes, just.
Thank you.
Any other questions from members of the board? Members of the public questions?
Mr. Madden has appeared before this board, would you briefly give the board your, thank you for your qualifications?
There's some license to touch the planner in the state of New Jersey, uh, but it's testified that.
For Mr. Madden as an expert customer.
Any questions or objections to qualify this?
Mr. Madden, um, you performed a review of this property from a planning perspective in in support of ours, D one experience relief. Can you provide the board with the benefits of your analysis?
Yes, um, what the applicant is requesting is what we in the planning field call a live work use. Uh, that is a. Business use on the first floor and the owner, operator, uh, live in the the second floor. Uh, and this is a type of use that is commonly found in small towns. And it's become uh. A very popular uh, use, uh. As we, we talk about local communities like Plumbington where people want to live. And we'd be able to have a business, and this is a rather good arrangement, and so it's becoming more common as a lay use type. And um, so I I find it, it has benefits uh, to the community, particularly in this location on these things. Now, the uses that are being requested are are ones that. Are commonly found in residential area, beauty parlors and beauty salon, but often they're they're. They're really uh, home occupation uses. But we're also talking about low-impact um. Uses, business uses, the limit is because of the amount of work. Not gonna be. Business, maybe thousands of people. Um, and also that means it's gonna be less activity in terms of traffic, parking demand. And all those things that uh, are concerned in a residential area. This this use is really uh. I find the interesting, I call this use an outlier, this building is outlier, you look at this building. Uh, it's residential in character, you wouldn't think it's in a commercial, so you wouldn't think it would be. Uh, zone for intensive commercial use, which uh, this. It's the decent, decent. So. Represents, this is a perfect use for zoning variance, if I think. The applicant is questioning this board. So you've heard about the uses that are being proposed, the professional office on the first floor. Uses in terms of beauty salon, barber shop. Um, the bookstore, I would, I would call it a specialized bookstore. I wouldn't call it a regular. You try to find bookstores, let it leak, you have to go online, right? So Amazon has sucked up all the oxygen, it's a bookstore business, but he was talking about. Like a technical bookstore, sorry about that, where you might have somebody uh, concentrating on specialty knowledge area. Also, as Karen talked about, um. A used bookstore might make sense too here, so that's the kind of bookstore, but as far as it. It from a marketing standpoint, I don't think you're ever going to see a a real, also this bookstore like used. Uh, those days are. Um, so. What I wanted to point out, though, the, what what I think should be made uh. Parent right up front is the applicant is agreeing. To to four conditions to attach the shoes parents. First one is the owner operator of the. Um, but also, the building shall retain its single family, visit natural style. Any changes uh, of the of the look of the building that differs from what we're stuck now. Business signage will be limited in the area to the area of the prior uh, group, sign for the law, so you can agree to that, it's a very limited sign, so. Again, it keeps it more in keeping. With the residential character on East Main Street, the first, remember employees, the owner and two employees. So, I'm gonna point these out because that's. Shows how restrictive what we're asking for in terms of the work use. In terms of land use, uh, this site is particularly well-suited for this this live work use. Again, the predominant name discovered here, in my opinion, uh, on in on East Main Street is single-family attached uses, there are always the frontage along that whole street, it's really. It's really one of the more attractive streets in in Plumbington, it's got a nice tree canopy, beautiful houses, it's it's really. It reminds me of what Plumbington. Looked like when I first saw it, in fact, when I was college and uh. Went to the. April there. As I was a journalist. So it's a beautiful street, and I don't think any of these intensive uses that the zone is allowing are appropriate uh, on the frontage along the main street. Now, um, so. The 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 site sits really in the middle of like a small mixed-use center, you've got, next to it, you've got the, what is called the uh. Forty-seven Commerce Square, uh, business park, small business park. That has about nine different uses ranging from professional office, uh, there's a vehicle repair business there, there's. Law office, and then in this parachute. I think that's the use, the use to be over on uh. Two two two, which is they think, they pack parachutes for people who want to die out of an airplane, something I'm not too familiar with. And something that's called parrot. But that's, I guess that's for when you wanna fly off on your own. So, uh, and then uh, there's, there's other professional uses. Stuff, so it is uh. It's, it's a, it's, I guess it's not certainly residential, but it also is not a heavy, heavy commercial facility. The master plan really talks about the purpose of the of the zone is to provide areas for more intensive commercial uses. Commonly with a wholesale component or outdoor storage. Well, that's not something I think we want to see, I don't, I would not recommend. Probably with frontage on East Main Street. And and also, the other thing is, that should be uh, considered is. This residential building is really not usable for intensive uses. With an apartment, it really doesn't. You know, can't really have intensive uses, uh, commercial uses here. Uh, nor are they compatible with the, this garden apartment use that shares the driveway next door, so. That certainly, uh. In other words, uh, I think supports what we're asking for in terms of uh, live work. Hybrid, you know, residential, uh, low-key. Business use. The, uh, the, again, it's not going to allow residential combination with non-residential use, that's the. The interesting thing is, under section two sixty, two six one A. Two six one, and one A, B twenty-seven, beauty salons, barber shops. And then. Thirty-three and thirty-six allow legal and professional service, so we're really asking for uses. And that are that are already allowed, so we're meeting, I think, the intent. In in what he said, we're asking for in combination with the department.
Now, talk about the positive criteria.
Okay, well, I think this is, that this live work use is particularly suited for this uh, location. This property is really an outlier, if if you look at your map, it sort of sticks out uh, into the uh. Next to the uh. Transition residential area into the transition commercial area, so. Uh, it's unique in that sense that it's right on the edge of of this non-residential zone, and yet it has a residential character. And uh. So it it also shares a private with this apartment next door, so you have uh, basically a use that. Should be as low-key as possible, but the zone is asking about requiring to be some kind of intensive commercial zone. So I think. You, you know, bottom lines, this live work use would be best. For old party in this. Little focal point area, I saw on these these base streets.
What what purposes of municipal land use level would be advanced by granting to your attorney?
Uh, well, I would think that the general welfare would be promoted uh, by promoting the general, the residential values of health and safety. Particularly for the adjacent uh, garden apartment, uh, and the. Sufficient space and a perfect location for a live work use would be a better use in this big use setting than. What the zone would currently uh, allow, and then finally. This would promote a desirable visual environment, because it would retain the residential character fronting on its main street. And it would, you would avoid the prospect of a tear down. And in terms of the negative criteria, I don't see any detriment of the zone plan and zoning ordinance. You know, to put it that, uses that are being requested are allowed in the zone already, and in terms of uh. So, uh, right now allows, likely would allow. The uses, but not in combination with uh, the residential use. And the residential use, I think, is important here, because from a standpoint of. If the owner operator lives upstairs. You're gonna more likely have someone who's gonna maintain the property better, is gonna make, is gonna. Is going to be concerned about residential values of keeping the the noise, traffic, uh. Livelihoods of the property, et cetera, uh, more so than it is a, a commercial use on that, on that property, so. That's, that's why it's desirable, I think, in this particular, unique setting, it's an unique setting on. On East Main Streets where you've got, next to the garden apartment, the other side, you've got a. A small business park and a grocery street cycle. So I think when you get that through, we're asking you to provide the zoning solution for.
It's fair to say that this, what we're proposing is really no different than what's been going on on the property since nineteen eighty-eight in terms of. An owner occupied business with two employees?
I I I think it is, um, no, I think, just, you know, restricting the industrial law of this use on the on first floor is too restrictive, uh.
But in terms of the negative, but in terms of criteria, and whether there would be a substantial detriment to the public good. Our proposal is really not much different than what's been going on on the site since nineteen eighty-eight.
Right, because they're all very limited or low-impact uses.
And the agreements that limit the uses to the ten parking spaces, um. Also ensures that there's no substantial detriment to the public.
Right, there there is sufficient parking, but it's for the uses that are being proposed, uh. It can accommodate uh, the parking in there.
I have nothing further, Mr. Madden. Questions from our uh, professionals.
At least we asked the question, many bedrooms, uh, on one bedroom?
One bedroom, yeah. That's it? Um, he actually has a question about bedrooms, he'll mine, and then. For commentary. On your uh, on part of the demand.
Um, well, um, that space is is a pretty good size, uh, people about a party might consider. That one, the use, most of the use of what propose is used on the barber shop. Uh, are in many cases, twenty-one only, or like. Are in many cases, appointment only, or like, you know, if for people not. My experience, you do not want to go and sit for hours waiting. So it's not a drop in use per se. Plus the owner or operator is is taking up one space. That's.
Here, could you just speak up? I didn't hear that last comment.
Yes, what about that? Sorry. Well, we've the the owner is gonna live on the property. So that's one part of space. And and then and then I would so so you have, you know, nine spaces left after that. So that could be the you're not gonna have. With uses that are gonna have a lot of appointment. If people coming via appointments are gonna be limiting the amount of cars that are gonna be on site. But this isn't a drop in type of use. And in terms of the amount of floor area. It is not going to be attractive to by traffic type of use. These are these are low generation uses. So I don't think you're gonna see a lot of parking demand out of it, in my opinion. I don't I don't see it.
Issues that Mr. Stryker testified to is that he's having a problem. Being able to market this property because it's limited to a lawyer and two employees. Does granting this use variance actually make it possible that this property that's been sitting vacant for some time actually gets put into productive use for the firm?
Absolutely, you know, this is. Again, the the uses, the the law, the the Howard Bush Law Office variant. So was it was allowed maybe years, twenty years ago, thirty years ago? Nineteen eighty eight, so a lot of things are changing plenty since then. What I think, you know, we're trying to, we're we're offering some use that makes a productive use that really makes. Appropriate is appropriate and impact on what I clearly think is a residential neighborhood. So I I I mean, that's why you have boards of adjustment. You really have to think, well, the spending is very important. The land use setting is very important, and I think this is a really good use. For many of the units that this testified.
Fair to say that this is a unique property that that is particularly that the use is particularly suited for.
Absolutely.
Any questions? Yes, this is kind of the final information of the uses being asked for. This could lose now we have been looking at the list we permitted uses in the transition commercial district. Figuring which of them the the uses they've asked for slot into and also looking, for example. Because saying professional office, there's at least three different listings within here that would fall into that because you've got. Offices for finance, insurance and real estate services, twenty four. The beauty and barber shops are number twenty seven. Medical and dental offices, number thirty five. Engineering surveying, architectural accounting, auditing, bookkeeping, research and development management, public relations, similar services, number thirty six. So I was looking to kind of map, we're we're opening up from this very narrow mixed use within this zone. To a broader use and I'm trying to define that. If if those are the only uses, the professionals that I just listed, plus barber shop. Plus a beautician or salon type word and then to discuss from a bookstore would sound like more of a rare books or a. Specialty of books.
That's correct.
Because that there's some secondhand stores available in here. There's also. For like number twenty nine, starting the tax return preparation. Other listing in there started getting more intense, so.
I think all of those, like the account, the tax return, they're very specific in the ordinance about who the person is. But they're all fall under the category of a professional office. And that's what we're really seeking with the limitation of the 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 three people who would actually be participating. We're not asking for a contractor's storage yard or something like that because that's that's something permitted and it's not appropriate for us to go on the site.
Be appropriate for a small, the owner.
Bob, you're gonna have to speak up.
It's okay.
Oh, okay, yeah. So whoever you're, please use the mic.
The residential property is gonna have the large, it's a one bedroom. If you're gonna have the owner, perhaps a partner, perhaps a child. You're not gonna have a great bunch of residents. So you got a parking demand of two for there. It's shared parking because the owner's occupying it. So I think the ten spaces are workable. And put it to the professional office, barber shop, salon and. Bookstore, how are you?
Specialty books.
Quick clarification or question? And it it looks like section twenty six, twenty nine D of our ordinance would require. Seven parking spaces for medical and dental, seven parking spaces for office, five parking spaces for retail. And then the two parking spaces for the one bedroom. So if one of those three uses plus the residential parking was used on this site, would there be sufficient parking spaces available as they currently exist?
Well, not for the medical. Medical is, in my opinion, medical.
There's seven that's required for medical.
Seven for medical plus two for the rest. So ten for the.
It would, yeah, you know, it it would it would fit, but that's the only one that might be a problem. Because certain uses, like a pediatrician, they're gonna have the whole office be packed with people waiting. You know, that's why we were talking about. Limiting it to a kind of single practitioner and medically is like a psychiatrist or optician, was a top, was an optometrist or. An eye eye doctor, you know, and not every medical practice because there is, it's the waiting room that drives up parking. Waiting there. If you if you get turnover, you can accommodate in the parking space of work. But that's why medical is, the the planner raised the issue of medical, I think, was appropriate because that's the one that's gonna. The greatest stress on market. So I would say the medical ought to be limited to single practitioner.
And that's.
Three doctors.
That's what we're proposing is the medical practitioner plus two assistants.
Yeah, but not that, but they would not be doctors or three, you know, three doctors or something, or two doctors.
And I just wanted to say for the force, Mr. Madden testified about the bookshops falling within the secondhand shops and or the miscellaneous. I'm sorry, and the similar shops under twenty and twenty one of the ordinance. The S I C codes five ninety three, which is outlined in section twenty of twenty six eighteen, does cover used books. And the S I C code five ninety four, which is covered under section twenty one of that section, covers new books. So new and used would be covered under those two S I C sections of our work. So I do agree with Mr. Madden for that.
Okay, so time for board questions, but I'm gonna I'm gonna make you ask, answer the question that was asked before. Can you speak, please, about the question as to why we don't need a site plan? And why is applicat- why what we've got here is applicable for to make a decision?
The use is already developed. It has lighting and has, you know, it's a parking lot. It needs to be striped a little bit better. But that's about and in terms of. You know, maybe, you know, maybe you could use landscaping, but that's about it. I I I think, you know, the front of it looks like you would. The residential community wouldn't change anything there. So it's the parking lot and the only thing in the parking lot I see. Is the maybe some landscaping that, again, we can add on the adjoining uses. I don't I don't know why you would, why, I think the adjoining use would be screening it. So you wouldn't be looking at a building which kind of hovers over it in the. Commerce Square of the zone, so.
Mr. Madden, are are we proposing any additional lot coverage on this application?
No, we're not.
Are we proposing to increase the number of required off-street parking or loading spaces?
No, we're not.
Are we proposing any deviation from any of the standards that have, you know, like creating any new variances as a result of this application?
No, we.
Other than the V variants.
Well, it's a lot, it's a lot of areas.
But that's not new.
It's not new, though. That's a lot.
And is it, are this proposed in conjunction with the use requiring a conditional use permit? This is not.
This is not a condition.
So if all of those four standards qualify as an exemption from site plan review. If we meet those four standards, will this be exempt from site plan review under the ordinance?
Yes.
Thank you. Board members with questions? I've got another one.
All right, admittedly, this is really confusing to me because is it possible that when these variances were granted in nineteen eighty eight? That this house, which is not a residential structure, it is residential structure, but it's not in a residential zone? Is it possible that when this was granted, this was a residential zone? Because right now it sits in transition commercial and all of these uses are allowed. So I'm not quite sure what comes first. It's like a chicken or the egg. So my question is, if the use variance was granted when this perhaps was in a different zone. Now that this building, lot and block, in in its entirety, is located within our transition commercial zone. What exactly are you asking for a variance from?
The reason why we need a variance is because we we can do all of the business uses that were are listed in the transition commercial zone. Problem is you can't use the second floor then for a residence. So we want to be able to continue to use the second floor as a residence while doing the permitted business uses on the second or on the first floor.
So then, so then wouldn't the more appropriate variance be to allow residential on the second floor? And allow the uses that we've already defined within our TC zone? Instead of saying, I mean, because I'm just looking at our list, what about a yoga studio? What about, I mean, you'll never come up with everything. So why not just ask for a variance on residential owner operated on the second floor? With uses allowed on the first floor within the zone?
You're you're, my client's gonna punch me in the back of the head because that's what he wants me to do. But the problem is that some of those uses clearly wouldn't fit on that lot. So I would have to argue to the board that a, I think, a gasoline station might be a permitted use. You wouldn't say that I can get a zoning permit to do a gasoline station on the first floor and have a residence on the second floor on that property without. Going through all of the, all of the site plan requirements and showing all compliance. But what we're saying is, based upon what the property is now, no changes to it whatsoever. We can continue to accommodate the similar uses that have been going on since nineteen eighty eight. Just let us keep doing that.
So then your que- your 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 question on relief from a variance perspective is you're 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 attempting to to. Thwart a site plan review should somebody buy this property and intensify the use. So you're saying, you're asking to say, well, if somebody buys the property and does not intensify the use. Therefore, within X amount of employees, within X amount of businesses. And allowing residential on the second floor. I I mean, that's what you're, that's what you're asking for?
Actually, what we're asking for is essentially to continue the same type of use that's been going on on site. But not just limited to a lawyer and two employees. That's what's been going on since nineteen eighty eight. And what we're proposing is the almost identical type of use, but not just limited to a lawyer and two employees. And and to allow it to be other professional offices with and the same type of setup. And which doesn't change any of the parking requirements or any.
But but does the change of use trigger a site plan?
It is not based upon the four criteria that I just set forth because we're not proposing any additional lot coverage. Because we're not increasing the number of required off-street spaces. We're conforming to the maximum and minimum standards because we're not changing that. We're not doing a subdivision. And it's not proposed in conjunction with the use requiring a conditional use permit. We're not proposing any changes. We're just gonna continue to use the interior of the structure similar to what's been done before.
So then, then is that the relief then to allow? I'm just trying to compartmentalize this because it's confusing because I'm not sure why that va-. My assumption is this was a residential structure when that variance was granted. But I don't know that. I can't research that far back on to what zone it was in when that was granted. But given the fact that it now is squarely within our TC zone, which allows for a plethora of things that could be there. So are you asking for so long as there is not. An increased. Usage and and and, you know, you know, putting more, you know, taxing more. Four area ratio, things that really can't change, that you want to be allowed to do more than a lawyer's office. But not necessarily, you know, medical, dental, child daycare, legal services. There's other things that could very easily slot into that space.
Right now, we're asking for the limited relief of professional office with with the description of the number of employees owner occupied. Hair salon. Barber shop and the specialty bookstore. That covers everything that we need in order to be able to market this property. If somebody else wants to come in and propose something different, they can come back before the board. But we've we've proposed to come back with something that we think is almost identical to the lawyer plus two employees situation that exists on site.
Okay, one more follow up question. So that covers your. You're asked to really not have a site plan should one of those things come back. But if somebody wants to come back with a child daycare, they would need to come back for site plan. It's permanently allowed. I mean.
They would have to make the argument that they're exempt from site plan too. I think it would be a harder argument unless they retain me. But it would be a harder argument to make for a child daycare center. Because that would have a different parking requirement and site circulation and things of that nature, which are different with state.
So really, the question is, I understand the complexity of the, how difficult it is because there was a variance granted nineteen eighty eight, which runs with the land. However, I believe that building is now zoned differently than it was. That's just, again, my assumption. Because, I mean, you would not have needed a variance in nineteen eighty eight, given our current ordinances going back. I went back all the way to two thousand and one and it would have been allowed. I mean, any of the uses that you're asking for a variance for would have been allowed in this structure. So what you're really asking the board for is not to have. not to have a site plan review should one of these items come in that you, you referenced so well, um, that do not intensify the use, that they would not need a site plan and that would be waived. And you're allowed to live upstairs if you own the, if you, if you work in the space downstairs.
I, we're, we're, we're talking a little bit differently, quite honestly. But what I'm saying, what we're arguing is that we're entitled to a use variance to allow the residents on the second floor and the limited business uses that we've described um, on the first floor. And that we are exempt from site plan approval based upon the four criteria that I just set forth, based upon those intended uses.
And, and wouldn't it be the same if any use on the first floor that was allowed within the zone met those same four criteria? I'm just trying not to pigeonhole the applicant into four specific things when there may be things that, that are on, that, that we haven't thought of yet, that, that, that would still be a non-intensive use. Um, you know, I'm just, and again, I'm looking at our existing ordinances and wondering why, you know, I I don't wanna testify, um, what, you know, why you're not asking for other things that, that aren't intensive uses. Um, family services, a psychiatrist office, um.
Okay, Todd, hold on, um, okay, so let me just, I'm gonna cut you off there because you're getting dangerously close to testifying.
I know.
The applicant is asking first for certain things and let's limit it to what the applicant is asking for, because that's what's in front of us. That's the question in front of us. The, 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 the clarifying question that I'm gonna ask is, I just wanna make sure, is, is that the variance in nineteen eighty-eight, when this was zoned as a transitional, it wasn't called transitional residential, it had a different designation, but it was RV, residential business, it was a different designation. The variance in nineteen eighty-eight was to allow for residential use subject to certain conditions. The certain conditions were owner occupancy by the, by Mr. Bush, continued use just as a lawyer and no more than two employees. That was the, am I correct in, in my explaining that?
Yes.
Okay, so then, what you are asking for in, at the moment, to make sure I got this right, is that this is a what you're asking is to slightly modify the conditions under which the residential second floor use was permitted in a zone that does not allow for it. Even though it's differently zoned now, it still doesn't allow for it. Um, and what you're asking for is a modification to the terms or the conditions, I should say, uh, that were put on by the board if approval were to be given to, um, continue the second floor residential use, um, moving forward.
To expand the ability to have different, to remove those conditions and it be limited to a lawyer and um, but under the terms that we discussed.
So, so can, can I just ask a follow-up, Jeff? So then would, should the board, uh, uh, grant this variance and somebody buys this building and decides not to live there, they would need a, they would need to come back for site plan?
Well, they would need to come, they, they wouldn't, it's use, it's use variance, they, they, if it's, if it's not, the, the use is, is, is subject to conditions. And if they change the use, then they're, that's a zoning violation.
Unless they buy the property and do something that's conforming to the zoning words.
Right.
That would be Mr. Cook's scenario.
Okay.
But given the lot size, the testimony, am I correct, is that other uses that are permitted by rights in the TC would not be appropriate, is that what I heard?
It may not be.
May not be appropriate? Other board members with questions?
Yeah, my name, kind of follow them, it's slightly different one, am I off?
It's on, it's leaning to.
Um. Just like you said, that they, that the modifications that they're asking for, the use, the.
I, I said expansion of conditions.
Conditions, the condition. Um, I think I have a general question, I'm just bothered for both planners, is effectively the condition could not then be, um, the conditions would require, sorry, sorry, um, is there any possibility that once this is granted, somebody buys it and then their business part of the use falls? They're living in it and that they would want to continue living in it without having a business? What would be the situation that we would be left with? Are we allowed to let them still live in the residence if their business is not active? Is one of the conditions allowed to be, or when do we have to say that one of the conditions is not active, what, what do they have to do? Because then there would be a fully residential situation in the TC district, is that allowed? I'm not, I, I don't, I don't wish that on any business, I'm just thinking that if somebody buys it saying, oh, pretend I'm, oh, even if, you know, they wanted to be a variance, I say I have a business, but they don't. What does our, is that, that poses complications for the owner? And, oh God.
No, 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 it's a, it's a, it's a, it's a good question, I don't know if.
Was that something in our requirements we'd have to set, or I'm asking planners. Because this whole, hold on, oh, sorry.
So, wanted to check, but yeah, it, it's only being marketed as a residence on the second floor and a business on the first floor, it's not being marketed as a residence in total because that would require a use variance, because it's not a permitted use in the zone. So if, if anybody changed remove the business use on the first floor to be a full residence that would require a use variance application, maybe have abandoned their group. That's my understanding.
And if, if it, if it want, if some owner wanted to create it as, um, put it as a full residence, which isn't allowed in that zone, but is allowed in the property next door, is it, is that correct? Then the zone then is full, is residential, residential? Would that would need to be a variance, they're going to come from?
If, if, if an applicant or if a potential or in fact owner wanted to legally convert that to be residential. Okay, they would have to come back.
Okay. Yeah.
The, if the business. Doorman, you. That's the situation that exists today.
Right. I'm just, got an opportunity to clarify.
It was a good question, even if you have a bunch of us going like this.
Other, other questions?
Okay, one quick question, in a matter of hits the skin, the base, we just go storage. Yes.
Um, that last item on that twenty-eight oh eight site plan review section, um, Mr. Madden, the property is not located in historic districts.
Thank you, um. Um. The improvements that are out there, it's not only was there a use variance, you know, in nineteen eighty, it's a site plan. So the improvements that are out there were built this part of the group site, lighting, landscaping, parking, hold on, yours. Representation from the applicant is that they intend to change the use from the restrictions that were proposed in nineteen eighty-eight that would allow them to stay within the parameters of what those improvements can support, the ten parking spaces, whatnot. The representation is they're not making, hopefully put any changes inside. There is a plan of record, one copy was a case to me that's not very eligible. Apparently they have other copies of the sheet, sheets, since the app, representation is without making any changes, I think. Given it's nineteen eighty-eight, and I'm not sure what copies of that exist anymore in borough. I think that needs to be made part of the record because that's the representation, that plan is still enforceable. You know, if it call from twenty, you know, our providing along the edge, not twenty on any category. If they call for a certain type of height, and that's not what's out there. Uh, as you need, if, if, if the board is accepting the fact that there is no site plan here, the represent, on the, based on the representation that there's no change in the improvements that are out there, I just think we need to have part of this record for what that site plan is. You have, you have a very nice representation of what's physically there on property. I noted there's some obvious modifications that have been made, the representation is that they're not seeking any changes to the plan. Uh, this was approved, this was approved in eighty-eight with a one-way driveway to use. You know, we're hearing testimony as the limited operation nature, the type of uses they're trying to impose. Um, we heard a, a statement that there's no overlapping, um, title, uh, title, uh, overlapping easements. The adjoining owner doesn't have any right to use the driveway in this property, and ergo, this property owner doesn't have the right to use the driveway. Albeit, when you're out there, you wouldn't know necessarily where the property lines. Uh, so I just think it needs to be, if it's a boarded waving site, I just think we need to get in the record, what is that site plan? Because there are, for example, underground stormwater improvements uh, at the back of this property, they need, again, they're not reflected on the plan that we provided you, because they're self-service, so. But I just think they need to be, you know, part, part of the record.
Can, then I'll phrase this in the form of a question. And we, can the applicant provide to the best of your ability, the site plan materials from nineteen eighty-eight, is that possible?
I, I know we already did provide the site development plan for Harold J. Bush as part of our application packet.
So we have that on the record?
Well, you're indicating there's a sheet, one of three, you're indicating you have other plans there. Well, someone else did, I'm looking at my, my little tablet and what my little tablet has is one page, but if there are additional pages, we can supply that.
So, okay, so, so whatever additional pages you are in possession of, you'll supply, because there was reference to us in testimony about a page two, I wanna make sure we have page two, okay? Other questions from the board? Questions from members of the public?
Hello, Stuart. Um, Mr. Madden, you talked about the visual appearance. Could you describe the visual appearance of the total site, please?
Well, the, the visual, uh, appearance from the street frontage, which is where the, really the, where the public uh, makes its judgment as to the kind of area it is residential, semi-family residential. Oh, it's, uh, and it's, it has a, I don't know, I don't know whether the building's historic, but it's certainly a very attractive building, so I'd wanna, that's why I said that the applicant is willing to retain that residential character of, of the building. On the, you know, and, and that, the, the exterior facade from my, uh, review of the site appears to be well-maintained. Certainly, the interior is extremely well, uh, maintained, it's done a very good job on that property, so it's a first-class, uh, building. Uh, and, and so it differs, it differs from what is behind it in the uh, the office part, the box, should say, Commerce Square, they, they have the a lot of different uses, one is a, a vehicle repair business which is set by deep within the district, so you don't really see it, but that would be allowed on this property, so I guess, uh, you wouldn't want to see that upfront property.
Is there any lawn in the back of this property? Any greenery, I should say? Is there any greenery in the back?
A little bit, a little bit.
Are there any trees in this ten-space parking lot?
Uh, well, they're forty, no, they're not. Uh, very, very, the show on the site.
There are trees shown on that site, can?
Are trees shown on the, the site?
There were trees shown on it. So is the owner willing to, if, if you're not seeking another site plan, is the owner willing to plant the trees that were required in nineteen eighty-eight? Because are you aware that this municipality now has a requirement of so many trees for so many parking spaces?
Uh, I, I'm aware of that, and I think it's a good requirement, the, the benefit of doing the planting that's shown on the bush plan will delineate, it really would separate property from the commerce, the commerce business part. I think it would make the part, I think it would, it would make the, uh, I think you would upgrade, but if you look at the property, so the applicant's benefits, plant, uh, some some trees or she, that would also change the parking spaces, and then, so it would, it would, it would be desirable, but, you know, so I think that's, that would be, uh.
Am I correct in saying? Being black law.
Um.
It's a black academy, this, this, and then, am I correct in saying there's no delineation between the two driveways, between the Bush property and the uh, multifamily houses to the north of that, there's no delineation, is that correct?
Well, first on, on the, the, the back of the property, um.
Why don't we take a look at the?
Yep.
You can share a screen, should be.
Let's get, we mark this exhibit. Is.
This was submitted.
Oh, they, they, actually, these were submitted with the application, you're right. This one was submitted. So, let me show you.
This is the one we're talking about.
Yeah, we're looking, uh, a packet of photos that were submitted in conjunction with the application. Um, this is, first photo show the, uh, real estate property signs in front of the, uh, the building.
Yes, yes.
And the front side of the building has a portrait from fifty, uh, from, um, East Main Street.
Yes, it does.
And it'll show a pretty infected monumental tree in the front yard and another evergreen tree in the front yard.
Yes, it does.
Sure. Um, consistent hundred, if you do the second picture, another view of that tree and the driveway entrance to a project.
Yes, it does.
And, it's great. Um, is this a view of the building from the parking lot area, the third photo?
Right, this is that little green area, point it out.
And.
There, there's.
The parking lot, um, picture of the parking lot. And are there mature trees all along the, the side of the parking lot, um, to the left of that front?
There are a few, yes.
Are they on, there, are they on the Bush property or on the other property?
They're on it.
They're on our, they're, they're, they are on our, right on our property line, from next to our property. As far as, um, the backyard, uh, that's where the detention basin is. There is a detention basin there, right back there, now in this picture.
In the green area there?
The, uh, yes, yes.
And that's actually part of our property as well.
Right, right, right.
And we've agreed to remove this shed here.
Right. Yeah, that is, that is shown as a, that's, there's no, no, uh, that was the line as a detention basin.
There's, this, this previous site plan didn't reflect any trees in the middle of that parking lot, correct?
No, it did not.
And, um, it did reflect trees along this area of the parking lot, which are there, correct?
Yes.
Are they the only trees that are shown on the site plan of nineteen eighty eight? Would you, would you classify this as a, an attractive parking lot for a, um, residential building?
Well, that's why it's a, it's both a business and an apartment use. It's a
But would you classify this?
It's not, it's, in other words, this is not a this is not, this is an ass, basically a, a asphalt backyard. And yes, as you said, it's an asphalt backyard. It's not, it's not a used, it's going to attract a family.
Is it appropriate for a mixed residence on the second floor, owner occupied with a business on the first floor, to provide ten parking spaces for those uses?
Yes.
Does it in any way meet the current standards of the Flemington Borough for parking lots?
Yes, it does. We, in terms of, um, in terms of the number of spaces related to the amount of, uh, floor area, it's consistent with the ordinance. If you're talking about doesn't meet the requirements in terms of uh, landscaping, that's why I said that it
Or lighting?
Yes, it does.
Where are the lights?
We're proposing any changes to the existing site plan that's been in existence since nineteen eighty eight, correct?
Right.
But if that site plan, if the current conditions of the property are not in accordance with the nineteen eighty eight site plan, are you planning to rectify those shortages?
Why don't you talk to me?
I can answer a question. So we usually talk to them first. I want to know their answer. He's a new Well, I'm going to take those, let's say we call for an oak tree there.
Do we need to look on a pause?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, we usually take a break at around nine, so we're past nine. Let's, I'm going to let you guys spend a minute there. So, um, let's take our pause. When we come back, uh, to, uh, continue the discussions on the question. Come back, um, into, uh, back on the record into order. I think you just recall the role.
Matthew?
Here.
Sebastian?
Here.
Charlotte?
Here.
Mr. Cook?
Here.
Gibson? Yeah, Ms. Whitesman?
Here.
Ms. Semino?
Here.
Mr. Echol?
Here.
Mr. Wyndham?
Here.
Mr. Show?
Don't worry, you're Dennis here.
I'm here.
Okay, nine twenty. Uh, so there was a question, do you have an answer?
I have an answer, which is we, we again continue to say that we're exempt from site plan approval. There's an existing site plan. But there's also existing, uh, evergreen trees in that area. And we're not going to rip down existing landscaping to put a new landscaping in. It's really not an issue for this board, respectfully. Um, if there's, uh, it's, would potentially be an enforcement issue as to whether uh, the, the borough would want us to rip down mature landscaping to put different landscaping in after what I said. I can't do the math from nineteen eighty eight.
Thirty-five than we're looking for?
Yeah, for two thousand twenty-three. Um, yeah, that's a long time. So we, 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 we again, we argue that we're exempt from site plan approval and that's more of an enforcement issue.
So I'm showing off the picture of the, of the parking lot. Um, where is the handicap spot? I, I, I went there today and looked around. That's why I'm, you know, I was just dismayed. And so where's the handicap spot?
That would have been a question for, um, Mr. Newton, um, to, he did testify that there were nine regular spots and one handicap spot.
But can you show me on the map?
No, I'm not Mr. Newton.
Uh, because it's not, you know.
It's the, the parking space closest to the
So, so don't want to keep this, uh,
Where are the stripes?
Let's get, let's get in. So Mr. Newton's come back on the one because we've got people who are remote that he's been able to hear. Um, and he can answer the question and say
The, there is striping. I located out there. The handicap parking space is closest to the, uh, the structure right here and it's got a handicap symbol on it. Yes, maybe there was something parked on it when you went there.
Okay.
I was there with Sam for me.
Okay.
But anyhow, Mr. Madden, since you're the guy in the chair that I'm allowed to speak to, would there not be improvements that could be made to make this parking lot of better service to the people who occupy this building?
We're, we're not proposing any improvements.
Unless the board requires, is that correct?
We're arguing that we're exempt from site plan approval and therefore we're not, we're not proposing any site improvements that I, that I can use them as a
Okay, so let's, let's, okay.
I'm not, I'm just talking.
Okay, so, um, questions haven't been asked. Um, we, are there other witnesses?
We do now.
Um, do you have a summary?
You want to open it to the public for comment and then I give my summary?
We can, we can absolutely do that. So that, uh, any members of the public who wish to speak for three minutes, please raise your hands.
Pause.
I just want to ask, who spent all this time worrying about whether it's going to be a doctor's office or a lawyer's office or this? And then you don't seem to be concerned about what that property is not doing and could do for the benefit of our community and the people who live in it. By having trees and proper drainage and proper demarcation of the spots. There's so much that would make that property better and more attractive to a potential buyer if that parking lot had some help. And in one letter, I was just looking for it, but since I only have three minutes, it was recommended that a site plan be required. Now, the attorney for that would say that doesn't, they do not have to provide. This might be something, I don't know, is that a state thing that he, that is preventing this board from making some requirements to make this property a better property, a better part of that neighborhood, a better part of our town? Is that a state thing or is it something from the borough? Because if it's the borough, you guys need to look at your ordinances and make it possible to upgrade properties that change, like this one is changing. Just a small change, but it's an opportunity to make our town better. And some, one of your professionals in one of these letters said that they recommended that you get a site plan. So I'm just asking you to do a little negotiating or whatever you want to call it, to get a better backyard of that property. Yes, from the front of this, but the two driveways that go in, they're ugly in the back. And this gentleman is much more cooperative than the attorney would be.
Any other members of the public wishing to speak? Hey, seeing none, um, can I get a motion to close the public hearing?
Still one.
Oh, you have, you, you get to do a summary. I'm sorry, then we
Well, sorry, I'm, I'm going to try to keep it brief. Um, you know, I've argued this before, before, but it really applies to Mr. Striker because Mr. Striker is a regular, okay? He's not a major developer. He is a person who purchased a piece of property, fixed it up in the interior beautifully and is trying to market it so that it actually provides value to the borough. Of course, everything can be, uh, improved upon. But what's out there right now and what exists right now has existed since nineteen eighty eight and he's only improved it, made it better. All we're trying to do is continue to do essentially what's been the same on that site since nineteen eighty eight with an owner occupied with two employees, but expanding the types of uses that are akin to a lawyer's professional's office. Um, it doesn't intensify the use. Um, I believe that Mr. Madden's testimony, uh, in support of the use variance relief met the positive and the negative criteria and that he demonstrated that this site is particularly, this use is particularly suited for this site. Um, we're located in the transition commercial zone and this is a in, in the legal parlance, a funky piece of property in that zone. Because it doesn't quite fit in as a residence and it doesn't quite fit in as a business. But if you have a residence and a business and an owner occupied type thing, it works. It doesn't just work for whoever owns it. It works for the borough as a transition between residential and business. So I made the argument that we're exempt from site plan approval and there's existing landscaping there that is very mature and beautiful and we don't want to rip it out to put a little shapetree in there again. Um, so I, I believe that we've met our burden, uh, we've agreed to the limitations on the use that, uh, has been proposed and I probably be the, that of course, with respect to how we're limiting that, we would ask you to act favorably upon our application.
Thank you. Uh, thank you. A motion to close the public hearings.
Wolf Cup.
Uh, Todd, make you a second, Karen Meacham.
Just give him, yes, Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Mr. Campion?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Lemon?
Yes.
Ms. Whitesman?
Yes.
Mr. Semino?
Yes.
Okay, so, um, you are up to a board discussion. It's, let me, let me start with, do any board members have questions for our professionals? Um, to clarify where things are asked, so. Questions, that's So Kara, can you summarize what is being asked for and what conditions we've already got? On the records so that we can talk about it.
So from what I've seen based on the presentation, um, the applicant um, the applicant is asking for the board to grant an exemption from site plan approval. And that would be pursuant to section eighteen oh eight, I believe it is, yes, twenty-eight oh eight E of the ordinance. Uh, and also a, uh, use variance to utilize the property as second floor, one bedroom residence on the second floor and on the first floor, either a beauty or a barber shop, a permitted professional office or a bookstore. And the applicant represented that the total parking is ten, so those permitted uses on the first floor would be limited to ones that would not require four year ordinance, one and ten parking spaces. The conditions I have are that the rest of the structure will maintain its single family residential style appearance. It will be an owner operator use of the residence. There will be no separate access to the residential unit on the second floor, must be through the main building. The signage will be limited to the previously approved square footage, previously assigned as currently on a property. Uh, shed will be removed. Uh, the property must be utilized for a permitted business on the first floor. Basically meaning that the entire structure could not be converted to residential use unless they come back to the board for a use variance. Um, the applicant has noted that they understand they're bound by the nineteen eighty eight's plan entitled Site Development Plan for Harold Bush prepared by Warren Warren, dated December nineteen eighty eight. Uh, it's consisting of three sheets. The applicant will provide appropriate sheets two and three, uh, to the extent they have in their possession. Uh, the applicant will work with a work professional.
Okay, so do we need to discuss the site plan exemption separately than the granting of the use variance? How, how do we procedurally, how, what's the best way to do that?
Um, I think it depends on what motion someone wants to make, but certainly we can make two separate motions and deal with them individually. Um, I think it would make sense that the board does not feel comfortable granting a waiver for site plan requirements. Um, then I would presume that, uh, we may want to reopen or take some other action at this point, but, um, I, you can certainly do it as one or two motions.
Okay, so is there anybody who wants to make a motion to, um, grant the variance subject to the conditions that Kara just laid out, which includes a waiver of the site plan requirement? Is, is there, is there anyone who wants to make that motion?
I just, you know, I just want to reiterate that, you know, the, the exemption from site plan requirements are as outlined in court. It's those, those five items, um, which the applicant has outlined for the board.
Who wants to make that motion?
So, so I, I'll make that motion. It's just, but, but I do have a question first on Kara. The, the testimony that was given was not necessarily a retail bookstore. It was more of a specialized trade book. Is there just not a code for that or is there not a way to memorialize that? Because there's, I'm not sure there's an, a, a, an appetite to put a store over there, for example. That was not really discussed. It was more of a, not a bookstore, Amazon killed the bookstore, blah, 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 blah. So, um,
Is S I C code five nine three is, the title is Secondhand Shops. And five nine three two, which is a subsection of five nine three, includes used books sales. So whether they're specialty, whether they're just used, that's incorporated there. And that is item number twenty and section twenty-six eighteen B.
Yep.
And S I C code five nine four, which is section twenty-six eighteen B twenty-one covers, uh, a number of different things and to catch all similar shops.
Which is, which is the jewelry hobby, camera gift, luggage, leather, dry goods, sewing and similar shops.
Correct. And subsection of that, five nine four two covers new books. So I think those were the two that I looked at. Um, I can also look at five nine 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 um, and see if it falls under that, but those would be the two sections that I would think would cover what they're asking.
No, I know they would cover. I just don't want to open up a, a shop over there. Um, and I don't think that was the testimony or the intent. It was more It was more of a specialized, I know there's not a code for that. So I just didn't know how to word that because I'd be more than willing to make the motion. I just don't want to, we're gonna have to memorialize this with some kind of, even though we're gonna be removing S I C codes, but currently we have to utilize, unless we can word it in such a way to say a specialized service bookstore, instead of even drawing up a code.
Well.
Let the interpretation come in the future of what a specialized service bookstore is. Instead of opening it up and allowing for dry goods, sewing, hobby, camera.
Well, we're.
Discussion, didn't you discuss that it was, well, it came under second hand shops?
Right. But we don't want to restrict them to used materials. If they wanted a technical bookstore of some sort, then that sold new materials, then we want to actually do that.
Which would be under the other section.
But can't we then just leave it as bookstore because everybody can, anybody can see that you have a Barnes and Noble sign for storing that? I mean, it could just be a bookstore and we don't have to restrict.
If, if, if we're, if we can do that and just say, based on the testimony given of those specific uses that were less intensive, as well as a bookstore, right? Because really, again, maybe somebody will open up a bookstore in the future, but you don't know. If we could say, say it that way and not use that S I C code of line twenty one, I will make that motion.
And, and the only reason I came to open Pandora's box there, but the only reason why I did do that is because I wanted to make sure bookstores was permitted in this zone because there is no identification of books.
So bookstores are permitted using the T C.
Under those sections, they don't specifically say, you know, bookstore. So you have to read a little deeper, look into what the S I C code is, but now we know that bookstores are permitted under those. I have no problem now saying bookstore because I'm sure they're covered. I just wanted to make sure they were covered somewhere, otherwise the applicant would need another D variance.
Okay, and, and Kara, so if I make the motion that we would allow for this use variance of residential on the second floor, given the, the criteria that you outlined, which was really a repeat of the testimony. But I, I want to make sure that we're not waiving sign review. You know, because we, we had said that based on the closing arguments of Steve or Mr. Gruber, it was, and the signage will remain the same, that would still be covered under the sign review committee, I believe.
Yeah, if the sign, yeah, it would be the same procedure as with any other sign. It would go to the sign committee and provided that it would be organized.
All right, so then I would make the motion that we would grant this variance, given the testimony given to waive site plan, provided that the, a future applicant, a future applicant does one of those very specific uses that are less intensive or equally as intensive. And anything else would have to come in, anything else, right? I, I mean, like, living there and not having a shop, trying to move in downstairs. I, I mean, that's not part of my motion. I just want to make sure that I'm clear as to what I'm making and what I'm moving.
Is there, is there a second? Let me, seconds, okay, so there's a motion and a second, I'll be able to talk about it now, thank you. So I see Bob's got a handle and Karen's got it, so let me go, Bob first.
Does the motion include representation of the shed being removed?
Yes.
They did, okay. And if they're going to provide properly the prior site plan?
Yes.
Yes.
My news regarding the site plan, not, not needed. If we're allowing the women's hairdressing situation. We have testified that the plumbing could be drawn inadequately, but would the, would they, would the, would they outflow? Wouldn't we need something more for that point, that would come into intense use for storage?
There, there's no proposal to make any modifications of the site. They're gonna have to go through a border and shore approval for any modification and change in user occupancy. If that requires them to make modifications of the site, then that's a similar.
It's probably under permit and if it's more than that, then it's a lot to come back.
There's also no representation, they're making any modifications to ADA access, you know, or anything. So whatever's on that original site plan is what they're limited to. And they, again, if they, whatever occupant's gonna come in, if they go for an occupancy, if the construction official, whatever indicates it. You need different lighting, you need different ADA access, you need water resources, the lines are not adequate. That's, those are cited, we don't have to.
Right, so, so if they wanted to put in a, you know, permission of a beauty salon and they go to the code officials to get a plumbing permit and under the, if that point means that they need more water than the service can provide, it's gonna trigger site plan anyway, because, right, like, so, so that, so, but if it's simply like, they want to put in a sink in a break room. There's, you know, other than just normal permitting, it's not, it wouldn't trigger. I mean, that's the judgment.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Other, other questions or discussion? Was there something you raised in your hand?
They have, in talking about the conditions, one of the representations. It was primarily medical. It was to be one practitioner with assistant staff support, whatever, it was explicitly, we're not gonna have three doctors here.
So can we, Todd, do you agree to?
Well, wasn't it though, a proprietor and two employees? So I, I mean hypothetically, if I'm a doctor, I wish. And I had two other doctors that were employed by me and we had a small practice of, was the difference between three doctors or three hairdressers?
Difference is that three doctors need more than ten parking spaces.
But again, I, but that's where you have to define what gets into less equal intensive use. That's the weird thing about this whole thing.
Todd, in the testimony with single practitioner, we want to make that a condition that the employee, the, the single practitioner and the employees are support staff only.
Okay, okay, I, I, yeah, I, I mean, if that was outlined in that, that testimony that was given, which I believe it was, I'm fine with changing it to, to read that.
Offered by the.
Yes.
And that's the medical, that's the medical.
And then three barbers, three hairdressers, three sellers of books.
A therapist and a bookkeeper. The other question was about striping.
Yes.
There was testimony that it was gonna be striped. Is that correct?
Yes.
Would that be covered under the permit?
Is that falls under maintenance anyway? So it's, so it's not, it's, because it has to be a condition here. Again, they're not changing.
I just wanted to. Certain people have.
Okay.
So it, having been touched on and tested.
So, so, so there's nothing in front of us about striping other than the testimony that the prior site plan remains in effect and
they're gonna.
They will maintain that.
Right.
Okay. Good. Any other discussion? Let me, let me just put on the record that I just want to just, just say, I, I agree that this does not be site planned. I want to just put very clear, I just want to get some money on your carrot on this that I, I, I believe that they have met their proof, you know, in terms of the criteria that are listed in our ordinance about what does not necessitate site plan as long as, you know, we make sure that the prior site plan is enforced. That's beyond the jurisdiction of this board to enforce, to do enforcement, that's, that's that's somebody else's job, but there's a prior site plan that deals with things including stormwater and all the rest of it, those remain in force. And I'm, you know, I think that they've made the case that they've satisfied the exemption criteria that we have there. I don't know if anyone else feels differently, but I just wanted to put it out there that we have that on the record. All right, so I'm gonna go around the horn, then we'll go scrub for vote. Hannah? You wanna, what do you want to say? Anything? Nothing?
Good.
So Karen, so the Karen does. I agree is good for Karen.
Yes.
Okay. Dennis?
I'm good.
Mike?
Good.
Todd, you've already spoken a bit, we're assuming you're good.
Everything's good, I agree, so we're good enough.
James, anything?
No, everything's clear, thank you.
I agree with your assessment.
Is there any other discussion, any other concerns from board members, anything else to add? Okay, so call the roll. There's a motion on the floor to grant, to grant the use variance subject to conditions given and that we acknowledge that the criteria for waiver of site, of site, exemption, exemption for site plan, that would match.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Semino?
Yes.
Mr. Campion?
No.
Dashna?
Yes.
Mr. Levin?
Yes.
Ms. Giffen?
Yes.
Ms. Weitzman?
You're muted.
I think that's it.
Yes, sorry.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your time and appreciate your professionals' review of the application and their currency. Dealing with this application, very much appreciated.
Have a good evening, guys.
And I remember you take the thumb right about this.
Okay, we are, just to move things forward. We talked about the South Committee before, our next meeting is, we're on item ten, next meeting is July twenty fifth. We, what do we have on the?
Well, I probably did put it as a placeholder. It just helps to keep the record. Just made possible adoption of books on citizen input. We have the ordinance discussion.
Yep.
With the South Committee.
That's it, all right, so. Is anyone not going to be here?
I'm not.
I have, sure, I have some people.
Which is?
Which is, we talked about the, and spoke for that, the sign, now the other side, the circle sign. Can't remember the name, the living wall sign. We had, I know, I remember in that, we had something in the resolution that if they did finish it or it went in, it didn't get made, or it was in abeyance. But we had some recall situation in that, and I wanted to discuss that as a board next time, what we do. Because that has been four years since we agreed on it. Four years, I think. I think it's four years.
We're in terms of approvals, but I remember.
So we, we put something in about a twelve month period and it wasn't actually working or being used as it was supposed to be.
I think. Right, and so we have to look at the line. Because let's absolutely put that under, I mean, as a discussion item, there was. I don't. Yeah.
Put something in that specifically, but what has happened?
So, yeah, we, there was something about if the billboards were not being used for a certain period of time, remember that was in there, but yeah, let's, let's have some discussion. Yeah, it's. All right, so let's, let's put that on the agenda and let's, and again, it may not, we may not have, the enforcement may have to fall to somebody else, but it's, but we should, we should at least look at this together. Sounds good.
It's a, it's a great, you stole my thunder, Karen, because I had the same, same comment. I just wasn't sure if we were allowed to discuss that without the applicant. So Kara, I'm not sure, or, or is it just a hypothetical on looking at, you know, enforcement? I'm not, I'm not sure.
I mean, we're looking to see what the resolution says with regard to the issue and what the issue actually is, so we can certainly discuss that.
But wouldn't it be, at the same time though, as a courtesy to the applicant, say, we are discussing your, your, you know, your resolution on such and such a date?
We tell them the results of our discussion and say if it's.
We're not gonna take that, we're not gonna take action, we're looking to talk about what the resolution, the approval allowed for, and then if we need to direct either our professionals or somebody else.
Okay.
Then I think that that's fine. Yeah. Okay.
I just didn't know if that would prompt the status, because I do know that they put up a temporary banner of late that was supposed to be up for a month or so, and I do know that they planted extra trees within the last several weeks. So I'm just not sure, you know, I, I love an update, I, I, but again, if we start by having a discussion of what's in our resolution, I guess that would cover it.
I, I know on one of the Borough Council recordings, I know we haven't seen them for the last six weeks, I know that a couple of months ago, Tony Parker had given status, he had contacted where they said it was gonna be, the screen was gonna be up by May. So this is probably three months ago, but I know Tony Parker has been involved.
Yeah, I think it's time to look at that resolution because I do think they may have inadvertently triggered something.
So we're gonna look at our resolution, whether or not it needs to go to the governing body or not, we will, we will deal with that next meeting.
And, and along, along the same lines from a, an enforcement perspective, you know, not to be the H P C police, but did I miss an application on red vanilla being painted on Main Street? I looked, I, I couldn't find anything.
We never, we never had an application on that.
So, so what is the follow-up for that from an H P C perspective when something is in a violation of?
Not H P C, it's code enforcement. It's not H P C, it's not us, it's, it's the code official.
So, and so then I guess I would request, Dennis, that you, that as, as a board, that you notice, because I'm not sure a new code official knows all of the intricacies of rules and regulations. And I'm just, I'm nervous, not, not say that it doesn't look bad, I'm nervous as what his neighbor is now gonna do and his neighbor and his neighbor and his neighbor.
Okay.
The neighbor to the north has a site plan approval, so we know he's gonna do. Okay, good, anything else under chair items? Okay, bills were circulated by email, can I get a motion on the bills?
Motion on the bills, Cook?
Todd, I thought you were sick with COVID, you're like everyone.
I am, now I got my second win, I thought I was gonna be in bed by now.
Campion, second.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Mr. Levin?
Yes.
Mr. Campion?
Yes.
Mr. Dashna?
Yes.
Ms. Giffen?
Yes.
Ms. Weitzman?
Yes.
Mr. Semino?
Yes.
Mr. Echol?
Oh, yes.
Ms. Swanto?
Any professional reports from our attorney, engineer, planner? Okay, do we need to go to executive session? Take a motion or adjourn? All in favor? Good night, everyone.
Right.